I would like to call this meeting of the National Legislature Commission to Order. The day is marked, closed, and the time is 11:00.
Glennis Ireland. Meade Treadwell. Lisa Torkelson. Lauren Lehman. Elaine Nelson. Madam Chair, you have a forum?
Madam Chair, I might recommend that you entertain a motion to change the order of the day to take up Item 5A, New Business with the State of Alaska since they are on this meeting with you.
So we have a motion, and you have a second. Lou and Faber, please sign.
Correct. So we are now at New Business on the agenda for the Commission, and this is a meeting with the State of Alaska. The Commission asked to meet with the state to discuss the process of the voter registration rolls and how the list maintenance and purge process works. And I am grateful to the Director for the State Division of Elections, Gail Phanoumi, and Carol Thompson. Carol, I'm not sure I'm going to get your new title right. I know you used to be the absentee and petition manager, and I'll let you make that introduction in a minute. But I am grateful for you for appearing. You did appear at the Ethics and Elections Committee meeting less than a year ago. And so, again, we really appreciate you helping us understand this process. So with that, I will turn it over to Gail and Carol.
All right. Thanks, Barbara. Carol is our Division Operations Manager, and as you know, we would be at a complete loss without her here. So thankful that she is still wanting to be in the employed part of the world, and I'm very grateful for that. So we're going to, I'm going to let Carol start about, talk about our statutory required list maintenance process. We conduct list maintenance as prescribed by state and federal law. And the whole purpose behind list maintenance, as you all know, is that it ensures that our voter rolls are as accurate and up to date as possible while staying in compliance with state and federal law. And I'm going to go ahead and let Carol take forward explaining what this process is.
So Carol Thompson, Division of Elections. So can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Sometimes my sound may go out. Just let me know. The annual list maintenance process that the Division follows has been around since 1998. The statutory reference would be 1507-130. In addition to elections law, list maintenance is also required by the Federal National Voter Registration Act. And the NDRA, as known as the NDRA, was enacted in 1993. Basically, voters cannot be removed from the voter list simply because they have not voted or because they appear to have moved to another state. So yearly or annually, the Division performs list maintenance and as prescribed under Alaska statute 1507-130. And the first part, and we normally do this starting in December of every year. Our first thing we do is we work on our first steps that target all voters who have not had contact with the Division for four years or two general elections. The law specifically says whose mail from the Division has been returned to the Division in the last two years, who have not contacted the Division in the last two years, and who have not voted or appeared to vote in the last two general elections. The key here to this whole process is the who have not voted or appeared to vote in the last two general elections, which is basically four years. The notice is sent to the voters who, to those voters who fall into that group, that includes all active voters, whether they're, it doesn't really matter what their status is, they can be undeliverable or they can be not undeliverable. But that notice, first notice is sent asking their voter in their intent if they wish to remain registered or to cancel their registration. They have 30 days to respond to that first notice. The list maintenance law is really based upon undeliverable mail. So all the notices returned to the Division as undeliverable that we get back from this mailing are processed for a second notice. If the notice is completely undeliverable, there's no forwarding address, they are flagged into the status of purge notice right away. If their first notice has a forwarding address, the Division then will update that forwarding address in our system for their mailing address, and we will then flag them for a purge notice or under purge notice and prepare them to be sent the second notice. So once that 30 days has expired and we've updated all the voters' addresses that we've received, and, oh, in addition, if voters do, of course, respond to that first notice by sending us their intent, like they may provide us with a new address, or they may say, "Please keep me on the rolls," or they may also say, "Please cancel me from the rolls." If they, if we do have a voter initiative change, we also update their record accordingly. Then after that 30 days is up, we then take, the second notice is sent to those voters who receive notification back as undeliverable. And that notice informs them if, informs them that they will be removed from the register if they do not respond to that second notice. They have 45 days to respond, and after that 45-day period of time, they are removed from the rolls in an inactive status. They remain on the rolls for four additional years. And during that period of time, if they contact the Division by submitting a new voter registration form, or contacting the Division over the phone, or if they vote, then we would reactivate their record. After that four-year period of inactivity, in an inactive status, also basically the eight, twelve years of inactivity, they are hard deleted from our system. So the list maintenance process that we follow annually under 1507-030 is really very reliant upon the community and the USPS. To return that notice back to the Division is undeliverable so that we can move forth with the inactivation process. We do also do other types of list maintenance, and one of those is through the ERIC Registration Information Center. There are 32 member jurisdictions, although it might be less now, I'm not real sure what that status is, but the last time I checked, it was 32. And what that does, what ERIC does is it, we send them our data, voter registration rules, and the DMV sends, the Alaska DMV sends their information to ERIC, and they both will, they both will go ahead and compare. And I believe Gail is going to go ahead and cover this area of the ERIC process.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks, Carol. So as Carol mentioned, in 2016, the State of Alaska decided to join this organization for the purposes of sharing our voter registration and Department of Motor Vehicle records to do comparisons for a couple of things. In-state address changes, voters registered in Alaska who appear to have a more recent activity in another state, either that be from the Division of Motor Vehicles or through the, through the elections offices in other states. We've sent notices to people quarterly now to those whose information we have received that they appear to be registered to vote now in another state. We also do get notices directly from other states. This is not part of the ERIC process, but part of a process where a voter goes to register to vote in another state, they have an opportunity to tell on their form, "Please cancel my registration in Alaska." And it is our hope that those states are actually taking that information and applying it accordingly. And we do receive information monthly from other states for voters who have done that exact same thing, and we as well do that to other states. We also recommend that, you know, voters who move from Alaska do not intend to return, if they contact us, to cancel their registration. The other thing about ERIC is that it helps the Division update voters' addresses and identify deceased voters and merge duplicate records. And as I mentioned earlier, it compares Alaska's DMV database and the statewide voter registration list with other states. Prior to every election, part of the ERIC membership requirements is to send notifications to eligible but unregistered people. That's not really part of this whole list maintenance topic. But we also send move notification cards to any voter who may have a more current residence address with DMV, asking them to update their registration. We do this notice in plenty of time ahead of the voter registration deadline for the general election, so the voter would have adequate time to update their registration and then be eligible to vote in their new house district. We diligently flag voter records with undeliverable mailing addresses and update the voter's address as well. The other thing in more detail about ERIC is that they have access to Social Security Administration Master of Death database, and that's how we are able to identify deceased voters who have died outside the state of Alaska. We do receive from the Division of Vital, it used to be called the Division of Vital Statistics, it's got a different name now, with the Department of Health and Social Services, we receive notifications of individuals 18 years and over who have died within the state of Alaska, and we take that information and inactivate records. As well as getting information from obituaries, status, and obituaries in papers throughout the state, receiving information from family members about deceased family members, receiving information from city clerks, also about deceased, deceased voter information that they may receive. We also do receive information on a weekly basis from the court system to help us identify voters who are, have been convicted of a felony involving moral turpitude, and we will inactivate those records until that person has been unconditionally discharged from incarceration, probation, or parole, and/or parole, not more, but and/or parole. And then that person is then provided information to the Department of Corrections that they are now eligible to re-register to vote. One thing about Alaska's law that is somewhat unique and is a little bit problematic for being able to do more with list maintenance and keeping our rolls as accurate as possible is that our state law allows voters to remain residents for voting purposes as long as they intend to return to Alaska and have not voted in another state. Federal law exempts active military personnel and their spouses from the intent to return requirement, and they may continue to be registered to vote in Alaska and vote in state and federal elections. There are, there is another category of overseas voters that may register even if they don't have an intent to return, but they may only vote in federal elections. The Division has re-implemented or reinstituted a process now where when we receive information from the United States Postal Service on a piece of mail that we've sent to a voter, and it may not just necessarily be related to our list maintenance cards, the little yellow sticker that says they now have a new address, we're writing letters to those folks and saying, "We received this information from the United States Postal Service." And if it's an in-state address change, we'll ask, we'll give them, say, you know, "Would you like to take this opportunity to update your voter registration as well?" So that triggers, you know, something to them to say, "Hey, maybe I need to update my voter registration address," and hopefully they will go ahead and do that. The ones that are out-of-state mailing addresses, we send a little bit different now, just saying, "We received this information from the United States Postal Service, you know, if you wish to, if you wish to remain an active registered voter in the state of Alaska, you might want to update your registration, or if you wish to cancel your registration, please let us know," and then we would go ahead and cancel their voter registration. I think that's pretty much a summary of list maintenance activities that the state does. I'm happy to send our little one-and-a-half-page just kind of summary sheet that identifies the various things that the Division does to try in our best way to keep our voter rolls accurate. And again, the list maintenance laws have been the same laws since, like as Carol said, they have not been updated since they were enacted back in the 90s. So Carol, is there anything else that I missed here that you might want to throw out to your panel?
The only other thing that we do get is we do get, you know, voters who will contact the Division either, you know, by email, or phone, or even letters that say, "Please cancel my registration in Alaska," and of course, we do that immediately as well as part of our cleanup of the rolls, and we get quite a number of those as well.
So Barbara, that wraps up.
Thank you very much, Gail.
Our presentation, and we're available for questions if there are questions of the committee for the next few minutes, if you guys have time based on what's on your agenda.
I see lots of hands up. So before I go to them, I would, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I would just like to ask a couple of questions and make sure that I relate your process to our codes because, you know, we're using the LM code, the LU code, the UN code, and the PN code. And so if you could just help me make sure in the three steps that Carol talked about, which codes are you using for that?
Well, for list maintenance, and Carol has a lot more intimate experience with the list maintenance process, but anybody who is targeted for list maintenance gets a condition code of LM, which means they're targeted for list maintenance. Go ahead.
Go ahead. The LU is also for list maintenance, and what that means is that we sent, they were in an undeliverable status prior to list maintenance, and therefore, when we did the list maintenance extract or changed their status to be in list maintenance, they, we have the U on there to indicate that that address in the past was undeliverable. So you know that the LM is a straight, you know, we've sent mail there before, there were no problems. The LU is a list maintenance notice that the address we have on file for them in the past was an undeliverable address. Do you want me to continue, Gail, or you want to?
Well, and then the PN is actually when they were sent, the second purge notice script.
Correct. That is correct, and they are scheduled to be purged if they do not respond within that 45 days. For this year, for 2022, we've already have finished that process and have inactivated those voters that were in the PN status. And of course, UN, of course, is straight undeliverable. That means they may have had activity in the last four years and their record is still in undeliverable, is in an undeliverable status.
Thank you for that.
The LU code was something we created basically to try to assist the municipality not having to mail ballots to people who have undeliverable addresses, because before they were getting converted to LM, and you would get them, and then you would send ballots to these people. But the LU code, it's my understanding, is another signal to you that the municipality does not mail ballots to people, like a LU status or a UN status.
Thank you very much. So my understanding is that you first contact people if their mail is returned, so that would be the UNs, or if they haven't voted in the last two, or appeared to vote in the last two general elections, and those are the LMs. That's the first step. And then the second step is they get the first notice, and if they're returned UN, then they become LMs or LUs. And then, is that right?
No. They're all, they're either an LM for list maintenance, meaning they, in the last four years, they have not had any activity or contacted the Division. And that includes voting, calling the Division, any kind of activity, contacting the Division. List maintenance is not triggered by voting alone. So, and then the LU is simply the same thing except for their address was undeliverable. When we send those two notices out to the LM and LU voters, if they are returned back to us as undeliverable in the first step, then we flag them for a purge notice, and those are the AP, PN voters that you have seen on the list at this period of time when you extracted.
That is great, and I will just comment to everyone here that we are grateful that you created the LU category because we discovered after our first election, when we provided the undeliverable addresses, that we were just flipping people from undeliverable to registered and then back again. So thank you very much for that. And Gail, thanks for all of the info about ERIC and all of the other steps. That is just really, really helpful to us. So I'm going to turn to the commissioners for questions. So if you would like to start, we'll start on this end.
Thanks. Gail, Meade Treadwell, it's very nice to see you, and I'm sorry, can't see how, you've got a great time. Hey, first question is, I know that you collect more and more emails now from voters. Do you ever contact a voter by email or text as well as mailing just to say, you know, you can't officially put you on or keep you off, like can you call us or something like that?
We do not collect voter emails or texts in our voter registration, or cell phone numbers in our VR system. The email addresses are used more for our absentee office to be able to reach out and contact people and people who want requests to ballots, receive the ballot via online delivery. It is not something that is kept in our voter registration database.
But it's available to you if you did want to use it, is that correct?
Well, you would have to find the individual's email address based, you know, go back and search for a record if they provided, we don't keep a list of email addresses and who's, what voter they belong to. Carol, did I miss anything on that?
It's maintained on their absentee record and not on their actual voter record is the distinction here, and it is not a very large number comparative to the whole state if you look at statistics of it.
Well, I get it, and you know, the issue here is that with more and more mail blast ballots where ballots are sent to everybody, you know, it's funny, I vote in the university alumni election, and they send me an email saying, "This is where you're going to send the ballot if you have any changes," and, you know, something like that is kind of the way the world works these days. So anyway, all right, I noted what you're saying. The second question is really, I think I got it in the initials, Barbara and you were throwing around, and you were, I didn't catch all the right codes. But Barbara, if somebody has not been, well, first off, if we get back a voter on mail, do you share that with the state? Or, you know, do we help them purge if our ballots bounce back? And since we're mailing ballots to everybody, who do you not send a ballot to based on flags that you may have gotten, Gail, here?
So that is a great question, and the answer is that the municipal code allows the municipality not to mail ballots to these codes that we have been discussing. Anyone in list maintenance, anyone list maintenance undeliverable, anyone undeliverable, and the last one, anyone who has gotten the purge notice. So all four of those categories that we talked about are not mailed a ballot in the Muni system. Those voters are active registered voters, and I'm not sure about PN, but they are eligible to vote, and they can call up and get a ballot mailed to a temporary address, or they can go to a vote center and vote. And then, once they vote, the state's going to get that information, and then they're going to update them, and Carol can tell you how that happens. But, so we are actively managing that. Then the next question you asked is, do we get this info to the state? So at the end of the election, we save all of the ballots that have been returned undeliverable. We run them through the sorter, so we have a file, and we, I believe we give the file to the state, and we, if it's 30 days after the elections, so there's certification of the election, there's no opportunity for an election contest, I believe we are delivering the hard copies of those envelopes to you. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. So you guys deliver your undeliverable ballots to us along with those lists so that we can follow along to scan them into our system with a voter number, because the voter number doesn't appear on the outside of the envelope, and we flag them as undeliverable, and then we return those unvoted ballots back to you.
And that's why you, and I think this year, Carol, we started the process of contacting those voters with a new address if we had it as well.
That is correct. So we give them with a forwarding address. We also are sending them a letter asking them to update their registration, one way or the other, for new information or to cancel.
All right. And if you get a forwarding address that says they changed, say, an assembly district, what do you do about that?
Well, we can't, we can't update, well, that, the ballots, I mean, that would be Barbara's decision for assembly district, but we only update mailing addresses off of undeliverables. We do not update the residence address. That has to come from the voter.
Well, but, but see, that's going to be a different process. That voter is, remember, they're not going to get a mailed ballot, right? Because they, it was returned for some reason, it was, it wasn't mailed. So unless they called and asked for a replacement, which is really a temporary ballot mailed to a separate address, or if they went to a vote center, so most likely a vote center, they're going to go into the vote center, and as you know, their address isn't going to match. So they are going to have to vote a question ballot. On the question ballot envelope, it's going to get documented that they had a change of address. And with that change of address on the question ballot envelope, remember, the floppy is on the top, the vote center returns that to us, and we send those floppies to the state. Now, there is one other scenario that can happen. People don't particularly like voting question ballots. So we have an opportunity for voters to vote, an area-wide ballot is what the municipality calls it. The state, I believe, calls it, is it a propositions-only ballot?
The state does not do a propositions-only ballot anymore. That's only in the primary if that were the case.
Okay.
We do partial counts.
Yes, so anyway- Yeah, so, anyway, it's going to end up, let's say I lived in Midtown and I went to the vote center and if I moved in Midtown, I get an area-wide ballot for the Midtown area, so I still get to vote in that assembly race. But, if I was registered in Midtown and I moved to Downtown and did not update my registration within that 30 days before the election, I am not eligible to vote in any assembly race. So, then that voter is going to get a Muni area-wide ballot and that ballot will not have district races on it. So, they will not be voting for assembly, they would be not be voting for, if they lived in a Lursa, they wouldn't be voting on their Lursa races. Those voters that choose to vote an area-wide ballot are then given a voter registration form and said, please update your voter registration so that it's correct for the next election. That's a voter choice. The voter gets to choose to vote a question ballot or an area-wide ballot. I hope that answers your question.
Yep.
More questions? Lisa? Okay? Elaine? Okay? Lennox? Okay? Lauren?
Gail, and Carol, this is Laura Meehan. I don't, actually, this is probably one Barbara can ask better if she understands, I think she understands it better than I do. But it has to do with the data from Eric. The, as I understand it, from what you told me, that you either won't share it or can't share it with the municipality or maybe not quite as fast as they would like to be able to update their list for, for the mail-in ballots. And I don't want to get ahead of myself on this, but I'm trying to understand why we can't do that or if there's any way. And it could be that the compact says that only the, the 32 jurisdictions that are members of it can have this information. And that may be the answer. But maybe you can explain it. Have I asked the question adequately to understand what your issue is? Okay, I'll just tell you, my bias is that we update our list as fast as we can, as thorough as we can, and it's never fast enough from some of my own experience. And I know that you feel the same way. But we have to follow the law and do that. But if there's a way we can get the Eric data to Anchorage so they can, you know, they can use it, you know, I guess I'm asking, why not?
Well, Lieutenant Governor, you nailed it on the head there. It's never enough and it's never quick enough and it's never fast enough. The Eric compact is between states and any data we get from Eric is, is used to update our voter registration system and, which is then in turn is provided to the municipality of Anchorage to use for their elections. And, like, we are starting to do the Eric cross-state mailing more quarterly. However, you know, I go back to, we are not able just to remove someone just because we got information from, through Eric from another state saying that they could be registered to vote in another state. So, that is part of the issue as well. Carol, go ahead and, I missed something.
Uh, no, that is, that is correct. It's just based upon, if, once we get that cross-state move, it's based on the voter to initiate what they would like us to do.
So, so Eric tells you that, I'll use myself, my case, but I moved to Kansas, okay? Kansas, you remember Eric? You get note that I'm registered now in Kansas and Alaska. And you have to ask me which state I want to be in before I did it, even though I might have registered in Kansas last month?
That is correct. Unless we have received that information directly, like from the Secretary of State's Office there or directly from the voter.
But Eric gets it correctly from the Secretary of State's Office.
That's, yes. However, I would be happy to confer again with our Department of Law on that and to be able to provide you a more detailed response, what exactly request of the voter, what, what their advice is on that. I'd be happy to look into that more and get back to you. But it's, it's not a direct move from the voter. It's information that they got from another state and that's, and that is being passed to the division. So, it is, there's an intermediary there. They didn't take the step to request the cancellation. So, that's why the card is being sent to them to ask them to please request the cancellation. I can tell you, I mean openly share and be transparent here that we do, we get about a 20% return rate of our cross-state mailings that we do to voters to say, do you want to cancel your registration? Historically, over time, we have, we have gotten about a 20% return rate from voters saying, yes, please cancel my registration.
In other words, it's pretty low.
Yes, it is, it is very low. But, you know, on the flip side of that coin, at least it's 20%. 20%, we do get off versus them staying on the rolls forever. But it is, in my professional opinion, it is, it's a, it's a low response. And I wish we could do more. And I wish, I wish there were ways to, to change that.
Thank you, Gail, and I agree with you. 20% is better than 0%.
But I will, I'd be happy to send to you information. Barbara, I'll send it to you to disseminate to the commission about, you know, why that's a problematic move on our part because it's not exactly directly from the voter.
Thank, thank you, Gail.
So, if I, this is in simple, so if I heard that right, the Eric information is basically just a notification so that you can contact, kind of scurs of contact, correct, Alaska, directly with the voter. It doesn't actually, the Eric information doesn't actually allow you to remove anybody or change anybody or hide anybody if it says, hey, you need to write this person.
That is correct. It's still very much dependent on voter initiation, voter initiative, voter response, as well as anybody else who might live in that house that we sent a notice to to return it back to us and say, undeliverable. Because that would flag them for our painfully long, worse maintenance process.
Yeah, so in theory, that if you get an Eric notice, then eight years down the line, it might be good. If you don't hear from them.
Well, it has to come back undeliverable and then we would, we would start them in the process of that list maintenance process, yes. The other thing about, just to going back to our two-notice list maintenance process, and I think the next time that the state does this is, we really need to get out there a little bit more in the public face, for lack of a better term, to let people know, like, for instance, Lieutenant Everett Treadwell, if you've got a notice your house for Billy Smith and he doesn't live there anymore, we ask them to sit. We put our right on the front, if this person doesn't, the person whose name appears below does not live there, return this back to us. We don't get very many of those back. That, so I think the division could look at ways to, to hopefully get more assistance from homeowners and people who live at a residence address where somebody no longer lives there.
And the municipality would agree with that, Gail. We have updated both our postcard that goes out and it now has a red, you know, it's, it's yellow with black and blue printing, but it has a red line that says, if this person is no longer at this address, return to sender. And then we do the same thing on the ballot envelopes. It says, if this person is not here, return to sender. Because then that way we have that information. So, we have been asking people to do that. We, it's sort of like, well, what should I do? Throw it in the trash? Well, no, don't throw it in the trash. Return it to sender. So, that's what we're asking people to do.
Right. And that seems to be a very, you know, easy thing for people to do. Just write, no longer, not at this address, return to sender. It doesn't cost them anything. And then eventually, your office or our office will get that back and then be able to start that whole process. So, it's, it's definitely not a perfect process. I, we would all confess that. You know, any changes, obviously, to, to the process would need to be done legislatively. And we've made that very clear to people that we've talked to about this process over the years as well.
So, Gail, you just kind of like pitched me the softball there. So, if the Anchorage Election Commission was interested in proposing to the Assembly to go to the state legislature for changes, what changes in state law would make this easier?
Um, well, I'm not really one to, like, direct how laws should be written, but I think, I think our process has a two-notice with two-notification and Carol, correct if I'm wrong, that that is a little, that is more stringent and strict than what the federal law requires. Is that correct?
That is, that is, that is correct. And the other thing the law does not allow us to do, and that is to do the NCOA with the USPS as well. So, we have to send the notice to the most, to the address that's on file with the division and we can't do a comparison with NCOA for that particular mailing.
As you know, another, and we also go back to, state law is very clear, it says, as long as a voter has an intent to return to the state, they can remain a resident of Alaska for voting purposes. So, that's, that's a tough one because how do you prove intent? It's, I mean, obviously, there are very many ways and there are very many legal definitions, especially in the criminal code. But it's, that's another one that's, I think, perhaps a little boring to, to the division.
So, Carol or Gail, could you please go into the NCOA? We have had tons of people that have called us up and bitterly complained because they said, I changed this with the post office. So, can you please explain, the commissioners are curious about what that is?
Well, just because you changed it with the post office, it doesn't change it with us.
It's, it stands for National Change of Address Form with the post office. And correct.
Right, but it's National Change of Address, but if you, any, anything you provide to the post office does not affect your voter registration.
Well, if it comes, if it comes back undeliverable with a new mailing address, we update the mailing address only, and that's part of the NCOAs, the yellow label, it's kind of falls into that category a little bit. It's a different kind of type, but it's still reporting back this person has changed their address. We can update the mailing address, but we cannot update the residence address. That has to come from the voter.
Correct. So, I mean, just, but you said, like, this person said, I changed my address with the post office. It doesn't matter for voter registration purposes. I mean, it's the same thing when people go to DMB. They do have, they are required at DMB to ask people, do you want this information to update your voter registration? And if they say no, then we don't get the updated information. It's all voter choice and that's, that's difficult.
There was another, I think, on the group here out there, the?
STS.
NCOA and?
STS.
What?
STS.
What is that?
Carol, can you define STS?
USPS, United States Postal Service.
Thank you. Yeah, United States Postal Service.
Yeah, I know what US Postal Service is. I thought there was another one that was.
Those are some great comments. Thank you. We will continue to discuss that.
Going back to the Eric, okay, so, how does the vote early vote often get dealt with, with the person who was in Alaska, can't be removed because he or she did not inform personally the state of Alaska or the municipality, moves to Kansas, goes, registered to vote, Eric gets a notice that they registered to vote in Kansas more recently than Alaska. They vote in both places because they're registered. How, you, why can't, I don't know, maybe I'm too simplistic, but if they're registered, if they go register to vote in another state and they, and you noted, and you're notified by the, by Eric, why not just take them off Alaska? It's like, well, if you're still here.
Well, that's, that goes back to voter, I can't remember the exact terminology that law said, but request by the voter. So, it's a very, in a key situation there. And obviously, we would advocate that that be allowed, but I believe, Carol, if my memory serves me correct, that is part of what the NBR is, the National Voter Registration Act has, is that it has to be at the request of the voter.
That is correct.
And is, is getting information from Eric from another state really at the request of the voter is the, the legal question here that faces us.
To, to the commissioner's point of, if you're registered in two states, that's not allowed, okay? And if somebody is recently registered, can that, could, could we suggest you ask for an AG's opinion that says that's prima facie evidence that they no longer want to vote in Alaska? It's prima facie evidence they can no longer get a fishing license here or a home set exemption or a permanent fund dividend? So, why, why doesn't keep somebody on the vote, voter deal? And I understand that, you know, the person has to ask, but, but you can't vote in two places. And if you're eligible to, to vote, say, in two residential races, that doesn't make a lot.
Well, Lieutenant Governor, agree. I mean, it's, the law does not say, our state law does not say that if a voter is registered to vote in another state, they lose their right to be registered here based on their residence. It just is, only talks about voting in another jurisdiction. So, you asked about that. That perhaps could be something that, and I'm not a lawyer, I don't know if it is in the face of federal law or not, but that perhaps might be something that, you know, legal folks need to take a look at and see if that's something that could be enacted in state law as well. But I will, I'm going to reach out to our Department of Law contact and see if we can get a little more detailed information to share with you.
Good.
And Carol and I both have another meeting scheduled at noon, so just wanted to give you that heads up.
And that was the same Department of Law who told us that we weren't allowed to join Eric when I was Lieutenant Governor. So, they, they don't, they're not always consistent.
I think, I think that reason was because we didn't have it in law and now we do.
Yeah, there were statutes, there were statutes that were enacted in 2015 that would allow, or 2016, that allowed the state to share our database for purposes of, you know, voter registration accuracy with other states. And I think that's what gave the state authorization to enter into that agreement with Eric.
Okay, we'll do just two more quick questions. Go ahead, Lisa.
Okay. So, in the, in the event that the person votes in Alaska and in Kansas, and Eric has the vote, invited to register in those places, how, how was that dealt with?
Well, this year, the state of Alaska decided to participate in the cross- to participate in the cross-vote project that Eric also offers to states. And, um, for the 2020 general election. And we are reviewing the information we received to determine, and I know it's 2022 already. Um, so that part is a little frustrating that it's taken this long to get the project up and running. But, um, we are reviewing that information and any identified individuals. We will turn their, that information over to the Department of Law, which is our first step. And then the Department of Law will look it over to make the determination whether it should be turned over to, um, law enforcement for further investigation. It's the same process we do in state. If we determine there are duplicate voters here within the state of Alaska, we provide that information to the Department of Law and they make the determination to continue an investigation.
Okay, one more question we have.
Gail, Lord of the Wood again. I, I would ask if you and Carol and others who are working on this, and maybe you could work with clerks and other communities, but if you could put a list of state law changes together that would make your job easier and, and, you know, to change state law to still be consistent with federal law, that would be one project. And then the second project would be what changes to federal law ought to be made just to make this better for all of us for election security. I don't have a whole lot of hope that that would be successful this year, but it may be successful next year. There may be more interest in it in Congress to deal with that. But the first part, I would hope that we ought to, ought to find interest in the state of Alaska to at least make some of these changes that would help you do your job better.
Uh, Lieutenant Governor, that is a very good point. However, as you are, um, very well aware, being a Lieutenant Governor and being the chief election official in the state, everything that Division does is based on, you know, Adam Parsons control. Um, a lot of, a lot of what you're mentioning, I would determine to be considered policy decisions. And I think that's outside the scope of, um, anything the Division of Elections employees should, um, get involved with. Um, however, um, I, I've said it, and I'm, you know, I've already stated, there are things in state law that probably could be updated to make things much better. Um, we, we implement the law as enacted by, by the state legislature.
Mr. Lehman and Gail, I did take some notes, Gail. I understand what the issues are. The Commission is a policymaking body that can make those recommendations to the Assembly, and then the Assembly can make those part of the legislative package that does go to, um, the mayor and the, and to Juno, to the legislators. And we will, I will make a commitment to continue to work with the Division and the Commission on, um, some Dobson ideas.
I mean, I think one of the biggest, you know, we all want accurate lists. We all want people who are on our list to be eligible Alaskan voters, whether you live in state or out of state for whatever reasons. And, and that's something, I mean, that's very important to us. We are not taking this lightly. I mean, under the current laws, you know, we are doing everything in our power to make sure that we do the best, to get our lists as clean as possible. And we know it's not perfect, and that's the frustrating part of it, um, is to, is to hear, not your, not your group here, but folks just think we're not doing anything. And, and we are doing a lot, but we have limitations, so. Um, I need to, to get out right now to get, and join my other meeting. So, thank you for having us here today. And Barbara, please follow up with me if you have questions, and I will get to you what I promised. Um, it may not be immediately, but I will work on getting that information to you.
Great, thank you so much, Gail. I'm sure the commissioners and staff just echo, just thank you so much. This was really, really wonderful. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so, to the Commission, we have, um, we have a couple of minutes left. This meeting was noticed until noon, is that right, Amy?
Yes.
And, um, and then we'll have lunch before we get started with logic and accuracy testing. But if you'd like to, um, do anything else on your agenda or extend your new meeting for a couple of minutes, you may.
So, move, Madam Chair, I move that we extend our new meeting to lunch necessary.
Do you want to have a second?
No, I'll, I'll second.
Do you want to make a three-minute second? All right. So, do we have a minute to approve this meeting? Um, after the conference. Um, do you have any members? I'm trying to bring you a few minutes to approve this meeting, or, um, can we just proceed?
I wasn't a member of the Commission until April 26th, so I will defer to those who are, who are in the act of the CDF. I don't have any objection to them, but I don't really have any knowledge of what happened.
Commission members, um, because three of the commissioners were not on the Commission at the time for the November 8th or the December 6th or the January 14th meeting, if only the commissioners that were on the Commission at the time voted, that would only be two. The motion to approve those minutes would fail. Robert's rules does not prohibit members who are not on the Commission from voting to approve those minutes. So, you may, um, vote to approve those minutes.
Yeah, I, Barbara, I said I have no objection. I'm just, I have no knowledge about them, so I couldn't agree with the Congress.
Right, perhaps the best motion might be, um, Madam Chair, might be, is there any objection? Thank you, Mr. Lehman.
Given the four days, I'm sure that the National Voter Register... What we're, what we're doing is, um, there's ways that they're out of control. I, I would move to two blocks, I mean, six minutes. If not, uh, if we mention that similar is going to happen, but I think the leader is thirty-one hundred.
Um, through the Chair, Mr. Mr. Tredwell there. The minutes of the November 8th meeting. Um, and the, the report of Canvas was adopted by a quorum of the Commission and was provided to the Assembly for the certification. So, it had, it would have nothing to do with that election. That, this is just the minutes of the following meeting.
Do you need a second for that?
Yes, I can.
Elaine Nelson, second. So, do you, do you have a minute for, for... And then, um, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Anchorage Election Commission on December 6th?
So, move.
Thank you, Mr. Tredwell.
My second.
Elaine Nelson, second. Um, if all of those are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. And then, um, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Anchorage Election Commission, an organizational meeting of January the 14th?
So, move.
Second, Tredwell, my second. Elaine Nelson, second. If all of those are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. So, motion carries.
Madam Chair.
So...
Uh, can I make a request? I, I, I understand that voting for these minutes where it says that each of us as commissioners spoke, it doesn't say what we spoke about when first people were recording. On, on things like the discussion we just had on policy issues or moving forward, I would, I would prefer that it at least say the commission members spoke about possible policy recommendations for updating the voter list, for example. Just characterize it that way. You don't have to say which side you took or anything else. But anybody reviewing the written minutes to find out whether or not they have to invest a whole lot of time listening to a recording, might not know which even, which meeting that discussion came up unless you say what we spoke about, at least. And so, my, my request as a Commissioner for the record and for the ease of public viewing of the record is that we don't just say commissioners spoke, but we say what they spoke about.
Through the Chair, um, Mr. Tredwell, the, the clerk follows, um, the standard of practice for clerks. And, um, I may defer to Deputy Clerk Jamie Hines since she was the most recent past president for the Alaska Association of Municipal Clerks. But our practice is to do what is called action minutes. And action minutes do not record any discussion. They record motions and votes. And, um, there are a couple of reasons for that. And one is, I think, the difficulty of, um, summarizing or someone ends up controlling the narrative when you do that. But in any event, I might suggest as an alternative that the topic, um, is clearer. That is probably the issue, that we could make the topic on the agenda clearer. And it says, "Policy discussion regarding, um, state of Alaska list maintenance process for today's meeting" is, is going to be my suggestion. And then I think that if the agenda is clearer, then the public would have the information that they would know to go to that recording. If that would work for you.
Thank you very much, Barbara. Um, have, do you have any comments on that, Mr. Tredwell?
No. Madam Chair, I understand that, I actually have been on a number of corporate boards that, that do it almost exactly this way and only do the action issues because so many lawsuits have come along later to ask, "Well, what were you thinking?" And, you know, "Did the board talk about the slippery sidewalk" or something like that? And so, they've done it for their own protection. In this case, we're a public board, uh, and I think it's important that the public know what we talk about, not just that we spoke. And so, uh, I agree with the clerk's suggestion that, that to try to characterize what the discussion was about on the agenda, you know? And I guess I would give a suggestive practice. I mean, for example, on the last discussion, uh, I would be very happy to put forward a motion that said, uh, the, the Commission thanks the state of Alaska for their, you know, for their time today and agreed in its own work plan to consider methods to improve the voter list maintenance. And if I put forward that motion, that would be an action motion. It would summarize the fact that we had a discussion on it and that we want to work on it later. And somebody could go back and say, "What were we thinking about then?" Okay? Well, and, and so, uh, you know, I'm trying to get to a happy medium where, where we may have to characterize some of our discussion as a kind of action even just to say thank you. But it does give greater guideposts. I, I do a lot of work with archives. I do a lot of work with, with trying to find what was said. Said, you know, a week ago sometimes, well, there's 5,000 emails. And, and having keywords, not just that somebody spoke.
Through the Chair, the, the clerk's office, the MOA elections team totally supports that. It is absolutely what should happen to make the record reflect what you are trying to make it reflect. That is just fine. And, um, Jamie has recorded the motion.
I'd make that as a, as a motion.
Do you have a second?
Or did somebody else already?
I have one second.
Lisa, second? All in favor of that motion, then?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you very much. The motion carries. Thank you, Jamie.
I think you're on the minutes of February 2nd.
I'm moving approval of the minutes of February 2nd.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Do we have a second?
My second.
Elaine Nelson, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That's motion carries then. All right, then we're on to all business. All right. Madam Clerk, could you please start us off with the Election Commission Guide?
Yes, um, I believe you have the guide with you. Uh, it is, it is on, um, uh, landscape papers so that we can go through the changes. So, the question that we have for you before we start slogging through the guide and the proposed changes that many of you had, they're all, all, most of your changes. There's a couple of policy changes that I did not include. And then, if you make those policy decisions, then we'll decide what to do with that. Um, but lunch is here, so I wonder if you want to take a break, get lunch, and then we can come back and continue to work through lunch. Is that what you'd like to do? Okay?
Sounds good.
I will pause the recording. You are back on the record.
Madam Clerk, could you please start us off with the Election Commission Guide?
Yes, Madam Chair. What you have before you is the Election Commission Guide that the commissioners were all provided and asked to provide any edits. The edits are incorporated into this document. You can see they're in the comments, in each comment as, um, you know, the initials of the election commissioner that, that proposed the change. And then it does have, um, a reply or a comment from staff. I would say that 90% of the, uh, edits are recommended to be accepted or adopted into the manual. However, it's 11 or 12, you know, 27 or so. And I do not think that we have time to go through the entire manual page by page, um, because there are 22 pages, um, before we start logic and accuracy testing. And so, I am wondering if the Commission has some other ideas how you would like to proceed to adopt your manual.
Uh, I, Sir President, I would recommend that we review a little bit and make notes on it and come back with another meeting.
That is certainly an option. I think you all might like to see other people's comments, if you would. Do we have a second for that, then? Was that a motion?
Yes, good. Yes, it's a motion.
Do you all have a second?
My second, for a second discussion.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I, I had only one suggestion that I wanted to make, and I will tell you I had not read it word for word because we just got it printed out nicely. I'm happy to do it later. I, I would recommend that we make it available to the public as a draft, just in case people want to learn more about the process we're trying to do with the custom elections here. I'd be happy to come back with comments later on. The other, the only major suggestion that I was going to make was that whatever we say here, we really have to follow the law so that this is, this is not a binding document on us, it's not a binding document on, uh, by regulation. I wouldn't want the city to be sued and be saying that we did something that was contrary to law, we found that out later. So, um, well, I think this is a helpful handbook. I just want people to understand what it is. It's a handbook, not, not a regulation, and, and not necessarily an interpretation of the law if, if legal advice came into play.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion?
So this is just a guide, isn't it? It's just a guide you have to follow, isn't it?
Through the chair, that is why we say guide instead of manual. It is not adopted as part of code, but I think that the staff could easily add a comment that, um, makes clear that, um, the commission is required to follow the law, and I think that's important in case we misquoted law or if the law changes between the time. Um, the last draft of the guide was from 2016, and the law had changed several times since then. So I, I think that's a good statement to include in the first section, and we can go ahead and write that up in your further review if your motion passes.
Trying to figure out what, what is happening here. So this is a conglomeration of all of our comments, and then below each comment, there's sort of recommendation by staff to.
Again, 90% of the recommendations are to accept, but I think that there are enough recommendations where there may be a conflict with edits between, um, commissioners or where the edit is not consistent with the law or the practice. And so for all of those, I think you're going to have to look at them, and I just don't think you can get that done in 20 minutes. So we're supportive of a motion to email this to the members. Um, I would like to suggest that the commission's work, you know, you're assisting the staff with logic and accuracy testing today. That has become a tradition and a practice, but it is not required by code. And the commission's work actually begins at the public session of campus, although, um, we invite the commission to come to training. Mr. Lehman and Ms. Ireland were here for signature verification training. You'll get other invitations for training. We want you to know what we're doing in the past. The commissioners have gone to all of the vote centers and said hello to the workers during election week. We want to continue to have the commissioners involved in the process as we go on. But your work in implementing this guide does not start until the, the public session of campus, which is on April 18th. So I do think you have a little bit of time to finalize this before we publish it to the public, if, if that's all right with you.
Yes.
So I think you have a motion and a second on the floor to allow commissioners to individually review the guide one more time?
Yes.
And just, I can just, and then do we indicate approval electronically? Is that what the motion was, or we wait till our next meeting?
Um, through the chair, commissioners, I would recommend that the commissioners, uh, reply, and you should reply only to staff to avoid an open meeting fact violation. And, um, if you would please reply only to staff on edits that you disagree with or would like to see changed. Anything that says that staff recommends acceptance, if you agree, ignore it. We're gonna, we'll just run with those. That would be the easy way. So it's only the exceptions that you would point out. Would, would that work for the commission?
It sounds good.
Okay?
Lisa?
And, and then, the next part of that is, we can do it at another meeting of the commission, but we could do a virtual meeting to do the final review and get this taken care of. And of course, we'll, uh, work with you to find a date and time that works for all of you, and that shouldn't be too long of a meeting then.
Glennis, do you want me to take the roll? A roll call vote. Uh, Glennis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Treadwell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Torkelson?
I'm sorry, can we clarify what we're hoping on, are we?
That we will, um, review individually, and the commissioners will respond to staff with their exceptions, and then we will hold a virtual meeting to, um, approve and adopt the plans.
Yes.
I'm sorry, that was yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Nobody wants?
You can go to item, item number six on your agenda, member comments.
Mr. Treadwell? Lisa? Any comments? Ms. Lehman?
I'll just comment on something I think I said at the, at the break when we were off, but I might as well put it on the record. I really appreciate the input from the two women from the states, and I, but I also feel it's too bad that somehow they might think that advancing ideas to improve list maintenance and other things that, to improve the delivery of elections somehow could be perceived as partisan, because there you have two people who are among the most competent people I've worked with, uh, who can advance ideas and thoughts because of their working with this. And somehow we need to demonstrate to them that's not how it is, but there, of course, is another way to advance ideas to, for the legislature to consider them. And so we may, you know, go that route if they feel uncomfortable. Anyway, that's just one comment. The other is, um, it's, it's really not this commission business, but it's our community. I'd encourage you to come out to Ferrandie, and there's a number of events. The Iditarot ceremonial start will be on Saturday. I don't know if it starts at noon or, or 10 o'clock.
Again, 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock. I know, I'm supposed to be there to help with it, so. But anyway, Ferrandie is, I think you all know, it's just an important part of our community, and especially last Saturday I was out, there were a lot of people were out, and interestingly enough, a lot of people visiting from other states in the winter. So, anyway, I encourage you to do it, and you, you might see me with, I'm not sure what they'll have me dressed in, but.
Bikini.
Uh, no. I, I had a nice fur coat on for, for an hour on Saturday. That was nice.
Through the, Madam Chair, may I make a comment? Um, through the chair, commissioners, if you would like, you can always give staff direction, and you can make a motion if you'd like, but, um, you don't have to. You can give us direction. And if you would like to give us direction to begin preparing a resolution from the commission regarding, and I have it written down, changes to state law to be presented to the assembly, and then the assembly to present as part of the legislative package or to the individual legislators tours, um, you may direct or move for us to do that. And I do believe, um, through the chair, Mr. Lehman, that, um, the state would work with us as we would draft that, so we would be happy to help you with that. We believe this is an opportunity for us to keep the municipal elections safe and secure, and, um, I think your knowledge of, uh, the state and state law gives the elections team a rare opportunity to take advantage of this, and, and we would like to support you in that effort.
Thank you, Barbara. I'll, uh, I move, uh, probably we should state the motion, even though I said I, I moved to, uh, to take an extraction of Barbara's comments and advance it, but I'll move that we start with staff preparing a, a list of, of items for us to advance, and, and our charge as commission is to, is to help guide the clerk and the assembly. And so this would be, prepare this for ultimate our action and, and advancing it to the assembly so the assembly can speak. Um, you know, I'll, I'll move that we do that.
Second. Second, by Lisa. Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Any other comments or additions from the commission? Nothing that, that was, thank you very much, Mr. Lehman. Yeah. All in favor of that? Mr. Treadwell, Lisa?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you very much, and the motion carries. You're in.
All right, we have a couple of minutes before we're going to be starting, um, our work on logic and accuracy testing. Um, we should do that. We do have one other thing we should do before we do that. Books, we need to unadjourn.
Okay.
Should we unadjourn?
Yes.
We, yes, we would like to do your oath of office, if you wouldn't mind. Um, and we would like to swear you in, and so assuming that you all agree that we're unadjourned, we are going to do the oath of office. So, um, if you would like to all stand, and we're going to raise your right hands, and you have the oath in front of you, it's a repeat after me, you may sit, say that you swear or affirm, or I will just say swear or affirm. Um, it, it is. I think that, that my understanding is that some people, based on their religion, are not allowed to swear, and so those people affirm. But I just say swear or affirm, and you can pick or choose, or say swear or affirm. Um, so, um, if you're, you're ready, we'll, we'll go ahead and get started. So raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear or affirm.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Alaska.
The Constitution of the State of Alaska.
And the Charter of the Municipality of Anchorage.
And the Charter of the Municipality of Anchorage.
And that I will faithfully perform.
That I will faithfully perform.
The duties of election commissioners.
Duties of election commissioners.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Great, congratulations. Congratulations, thank you. And we'll get all your autographs on here, and congratulations. Thank you so much for serving. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
My favorite part of my job.
Madam Chair, I move you adjourn.
We adjourn.
We adjourn.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Treadwell, you have to leave, right? Thank you very much for attending.
Thank you. Have fun with logic and accuracy, and may, may we all be blessed with, with logic and accuracy.
We hope.